Okay, Ms. Downhour, we're good to go?
Okay, Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to put Finance Committee meeting back in the regular, or reconvene Finance Committee. Take us out of the executive session.
I second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, we are back in regular session for the Finance Committee. Moving on to resolutions for this evening, we have Temporary Resolution 68-20. This is for the City, the Service Safety Director to enter into a change order for the Union Marlberry Phase 3 Storm Sewer Project. And I believe this deals with lowering the gas lines on Klein Court. So, Mr. James, this is coming through your committee.
Thank you, Chairman Holly Downhour. Actually, it appears that they've discovered after the fact that there's several gas lines that are not located such that the project can continue. And it's a roughly $2.5 million project. And the last email I got from Denise, and she's online here, I believe also, Denise Cruz, that they want another $132,000 for that. To, and then again, things that they now have to move in order to accomplish that. Also, there is some sense of urgency to this because if we don't prove it quickly, that could result in some costly delays, and we'd like to avoid that. But I'd like to turn that over to Denise, if she's online, and see if she has anything she would like to add.
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. So, this is, this is the gas lines on Klein Court, on Marlberry, and on North Ohio. And it's because we're lowering the streets that we've run into this cover issue. The Gas Department cannot get to it in time to keep the project moving, so we have to have our contractor bring in their subcontractor to lower the gas lines. And I got the change order today with the addition of North Ohio. The cost is now $132,000.
Go ahead, Mr. James.
I think that pretty much summarizes it. My only last question for Denise might be, is this the end of it? Or do we have other lines that will be discovered later on?
The contractor has been locating these lines so he can get ahead of them. So, Union Street is already done. So, that's about half the project. And the only other area that is not included in this is Carl Drive. And they've already located those lines, and they don't think those will be a problem.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. James?
That's all I have to add unless there are some other questions.
I don't see anybody raising their hand. You're looking for two readings, is that correct?
Actually, I'm gonna ask for suspension of, to just one reading so we can get this on its way.
And I have Mrs. Teener as your second.
That's correct.
Okay. Moving on to Temporary Resolution 69-20, this is a resolution to basically appropriate money for health insurance claims. We are leaving the Care Factor and Ohio PPO Connect. And this would be to process claims that are incurred before June 30th, but not received until after we have left the consortium. Does anybody have anything else to add to that? The total's $81,500. Okay. We will be asking for suspension. And Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be my second as this is coming through Finance? I think she mouthed "I will," so, okay. The next resolution is Temporary Resolution 70-20. This is a resolution to enter into an LPA agreement with ODOT for the Edie Road Project. And this is so that we can secure federal funding for the widening of Edie Road. It's coming through Public Works. Mr. Schoonover?
Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion, so we're gonna go through readings on this one.
Okay, and I think I'm the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns regarding Temporary Resolution 70-20? All right. Other discussion items for Finance. I would like to go back to Temporary Resolution 66-20, which we had a lengthy conversation about a couple of weeks ago. And this is for the coming through water pollution control. And it is to fill out an application or submit an application for financial assistance through the OEP A. I believe we had requested some updates. And I believe Denise sent over an attachment. I don't know who wants to take this, whether, Mr. James, you wanna take it, or Mr. Stotin, you wanna recap what your requests were? Mr. James?
I won't usurp anything that Tom Stotin might wanna say, but we had our first face-to-face meeting this week for the Water Pollution Committee. A significant amount of discussion. And I have to certainly publicly thank everybody that agreed to meet. We did observe social distancing. You were at your own discretion able to come in and wear a mask if you so choose. But I think the meeting went quite well. I do have to compliment Denise Cruz, Mike Nixon, and Steve Wellsted for the preparation they made for that meeting and all the information that they provided. And I will open that now to them for any additional questions that the Finance Committee may have.
Okay, I don't know if Mr. Stotin has anything or not, but we did have discussion naturally above and beyond the environmental concerns that we have with an aging, beyond its useful life plant. We have economic concerns of rates and what this project will do to rates. And there have been a lot of emails sent out. There's one on May 8th that Stephen put together that had a lot of information on it. There was Denise's bullet points today. And then we put one out Friday that was kind of a preliminary analysis on the rates. Given three scenarios on the rates, just a best case, worst case. In all cases, the current rate structure, this has been planned as part of our rate structure many years ago to upgrade this plant, knowing that it'll be the end of its useful life. So, the worst case that we can see right now would be a $25 million project over 20 years, and even at 1.2, which is higher than the 1.12 rate. It would be a net debt service of 1.45 million. We plan on paying off a, calling a bond for the 2012 work that the city had done. That'll save $321,000, $322,000. And we anticipate seeing about 10% reduction in electric service. That'll be about another $37,000. So, about a $1.1 million additional hit to the budget. That can be handled now, and I'll let Denise also chime in here in a minute because she has gone over the rate study preliminarily in-house. And we have Arcadis doing one that will be out later this year. But we've not raised rates since, I believe, 2014. In '17, we had a lowering of rates for the industrial users and set up a tiered structure. So, the way we see things right now, this project will not result in any type of rate increase for the foreseeable future, the next three years, as a safe bet, and hopefully longer than that. And what we're looking at now, and I'll let Mr. Stotin speak up, is with the relatively cheap cost of money right now, we're looking at, rather than using cash that we have on hand down on this, we'll keep it because we have projects on the long-term control plan through 2033, I believe, that will take money and will never borrow as cheap as we are now. So, I don't wanna consume that cash now, and then have to borrow at a higher rate later. So, I'll stop now and let Denise kind of jump in and offer anything she may have.
I don't wanna drone on long about this, but one of the things that is ongoing is looking at the cost of the money and where interest rates are and where our investment income is. The other big unknown is if there's going to be stimulus money. If there's stimulus money for projects, this project is in place and would be an excellent candidate for stimulus money. So, there's a chance, if stimulus money becomes available, that we can get additional funding. The last time they had stimulus money, they gave 50% grants. So, as, as things are ongoing, we keep those in mind as we look at funding for this.
I don't know if Mr. Stotin has anything that he'd like to add from attending our last meeting, committee meeting, and talking to finances.
I do. Thank you, Mike. First of all, I mean, thank you for the meeting. You know, a lot of good information came out of there. Stephen Wellsted provided some, a couple of very good emails with good documentation in it. I felt, you know, from my position, I've been here a long time. Some of you folks on council, not nearly as long. This might be one of the biggest spends that you're about to make. And it's important to understand the dynamics behind this. And when we're talking about an enterprise fund, we're talking about, you know, an impact to rates. So, it's important that, you know, we know what's gonna happen to rates specific to this project. And then also, you know, because we got caught up in COVID-19 and interest rates were basically almost zero, afforded an opportunity here to basically do as Mr. Nixon said, which was, you know, we'll finance it and keep the cash for other projects as they may come up or need to be addressed quickly. Because that money that sits in our account probably earns more money than we're paying in interest on the, on the debt that, for the 20 years. So, I completely agree with all that. It's, I wanna thank Denise for the bullet points. Really talks about, you know, the what, the why, and the how. And also, I appreciate the schedule because there's a lot of things that are gonna happen between now and really the first of the year, specific to this project. And this will keep it kind of front of mind. But, you know, I'm, all my questions have been answered. I appreciate the meeting. I think you guys did a wonderful job. And we even had a discussion, for those of you that weren't there but might be new, about the contracts we really kind of driven by Mike through, and Denise through Bricker and Eckler, to ensure that our construction contracts protect Lancaster and not really the folks that are working on our behalf. So, we had a very good meeting. I thank you for that, and I completely support this.
And I know, if I can jump in again, I know Treasure Wolfinger. We've been very involved talking to him recently too. And I don't know if Mr. Wolfinger has anything he'd like to add.
No, I think you did a fine job of pulling erring out of the weeds and sorting through it. And it makes total sense at this point in time to me. Thank you.
I don't believe we have anything else from this room.
Okay, Mr. James?
Only final comment that I would have on this. I think there's a general consensus that this project is urgently needed in order for us to comply with the regulations, the EPA regulations, for the Clean Water Act, as well as one of the future potential regulations for phosphorus mitigation. I want everybody to also understand, this will not render this plant a new plant. We'll still use the same existing technology. This will get us to the point where we can, for another few, several years, hopefully 20 more years plus, we'll be able to run this plant and have it as a usable asset. And one last thing, I am gonna ask for a suspension of the third reading tonight.
Ms. Downhour, if I can just clarify, you're gonna amend this tonight, right?
I believe there is an amendment on the table, yes.
Amend it and then suspend and then pass?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. I appreciate all the work that everybody did on it and appreciate the conversation that happened at the Water Pollution Control Meeting. I apologize, I was not able to be there. I had a conflict. So, moving on, do we have any departmental updates tonight?
Yes, I'd like to give a departmental update.
Okay, Linda?
Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Burge Disser. I'm the Director of Community Development and very happy to be there. I've actually been on the job for three months now. And I had intended to meet each of you individually and have an opportunity to introduce myself and to get to know you a little bit. And then, you know, COVID-19, so nothing like starting a new job right before a global pandemic. But I wanted to come tonight just to give you an update of what's happening with community development. So, Mary Jo has retired and was happy to train with her as long as I was able before we closed City Hall. We've hired a new Assistant Director. Her name is Kelly Scott. She's really fantastic, and Diane Shore has been training her. And Diane's last day will be this Thursday. So, we've been really glad to have Diane stick with us and train Kelly. We're having an Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday, so I'm looking forward to going through a lot of information with the Economic Development Committee and getting your questions and being able to respond to them. I'm sure I won't know the answers to, to a lot of them, but I wanna ask the questions and, and, you know, and get your feedback. And so, we are in the midst of our regular CDBG funding cycle. We've had a public hearing, and we've had applications submitted. So, we're making those decisions on that funding and still trying to meet that, that schedule to get us, you know, get our plan approved and stay on that regular schedule. And that's about $504,000 this year for, in regular CDBG funding, Community Development Block grant funding. Then, we're also receiving an additional allocation of Community Development Block Grants through the CARES Act. So, this is called CDBGCV Funding. And we're receiving $296,742. So, we're doing what we need to do to be able to receive that money. And more, I'll talk more about that, and I'll talk about that with the Economic Development Committee. But I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And then, I've also been facilitating weekly meetings with other funders, so other organizations that are receiving additional dollars, especially for, especially around the pandemic. So, the Fairfield County Foundation, the United Way, absolutely, you know, the county. And Adam H. has been on the call, Destination Downtown Lancaster, the Chamber of Commerce, Community Action, Job and Family Services. So, we've had a really great, really great participation from the community. And everyone has been very generous with sharing information and collaborating around how to best use these dollars to meet the needs in the community and, and fill the gaps. So, that's my update.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Linda? All right. Thank you very much, Linda. That was a very good update. Do we have any other, do we have any other departmental updates this evening? Oh, gosh. Tricia?
Yeah, I'm just letting council know that on the next meeting, I will be bringing the lovely 2021 tax budget before you. The annual piece that we usually have to submit, well, we have to submit to the County Auditor's Office by the 1st of July. So, on that one, I'll be only needing two readings to be passed on the final meeting in June so we can get that filed up with the County Auditor's Office.
You're still muted, Holly.
Thank you very much, Tricia. Does anybody have any questions about that?
If I might, Ms. Downhour?
Yes.
Ms. Nettles, I recollect a conversation maybe last year regarding the tax budget and our desire to, you know, not do it anymore?
That's a strong desire of mine, and I think the Lancaster City Schools and a lot of the other ones. But it's solely at the County Tax Budget Commission, which consists of the County Auditor, County Treasurer, and County Prosecutor. And as of now, they have no wish to give that up.
Have there been any conversations with them? Because I know we talked about taking a walk up the hill.
I, I mean, every time I see them, I kind of harass or bring that source brought up with them. And it just kind of, it's what they wanna do. So, I think it's their source, as I've explained to other people before, to micromanage, like the townships and the other things, the trustees. But I don't know if it's all or none. It's just, we're kind of all stuck in this. And I know the city schools really love it because they also do a five-year state budget. Then they gotta turn around and do an annual budget for the tax budget. It's kind of an effort and futility, but yeah, it's a lot of work for nothing, really.
Ms. Downhour, right, after our discussion last year, I had a conversation with a couple of different members. I think I met with two members individually. I may have met with all three individually. And the discussion did center around what Ms. Nettles brought up. And they characterized it a little bit differently, but the end was the same, which was, you know, there are townships and other entities in the county that aren't nearly as professional in their financial dealings and processes as we are, or as the school district is, or as Fairfield D.D. is, whatever the case may be. And so, this is their way to sort of keep their finger on what's happening in an attempt to discern if they're gonna have any real issue. In the discussions I had, when I said, "Well, what if we banded these different groups together and we all just sort of did what you just said, which was the discussion last year, march up the hill and say, 'We're not doing this anymore,'" and their concerns seemed to center again around the idea that, "Well, that wouldn't be fair." How can we require the townships or someone else to do this and not require the City of Lancaster, these larger entities? And I think the reason is just what they stated, because we have our stuff together where others may not. Nevertheless, it may be worth evaluating again, but all I received was pushback and, and the same as, as Ms. Nettles, no desire to not have each entity move forward with this going forward into the future.
Again, I, from years ago, with state audit, when they've come into the office, they've said, "We're one of the few counties in the state of Ohio that still do tax budgets."
Mr. Hall?
I'm sorry. If I might just note very quickly, I believe even the county still submits their budget to the County Tax Commission. And so, the whole thing's just very wacky and weird, but, but whatever, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, why don't we propose that those entities within the framework of the county that are independently audited on a frequent basis are exempt from the, from the annual planning process? There's gotta be some layer of effort or work that the larger organizations do that the townships don't. And if we could use that as the context to eliminate the effort for those larger organizations, then the commissioners would have some basis to distinguish between the two types of entities.
That's an idea or a topic that we can discuss. It'll just be something that we can, I can suggest when we go up to the tax budget hearing in August that has an annual, have to go up in the County Commissioners' office to go before the commission to discuss the tax budget. So, I'll bring that up as an idea, but I'm not sure how far that will go, but I'll say something.
Worth a shot. Mr. Wolfinger?
Thank you. For the record, I have approached them all numerous times over the years, and they are dead set against doing this. And to Councilman Hall, every public entity in this county is subject to audit by the State Auditor's Office. And to best my knowledge, things are going pretty well by most of the groups. So, this is, you're hitting a wall. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Trish, for that. Great news.
Yay.
Mitch, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanna give two quick updates. I believe, I think the mayor has already sent this out on maybe his Facebook post, but I'll make another mention of it here. I think the Magna International Project or the Rock Mill Corporate Park Project that we've been working on here, they, they just set the Box Culvert Bridge this past Friday. And so, if you actually drive by there, you'll actually see something that looks like a product that you can cross and get into the parking lot there. So, that's kind of an exciting day last Friday. And then, we also had the bid opening for the Fair Avenue Project. This would be some of our STP-type funding that we use. This would go from High Street to Sheridan Drive. Shelley Company was the low bidder. And so, we'll be getting into a contract with Shelley and hopefully getting that project started here this summer. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions for Mitch? Okay, seen none. Do we have any other departmental updates? Don't see any. So, President Oul, do we have anything from you for tonight's meeting prep?
We've covered it all. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, are there any other items for Finance? Seen none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I gotta unmute. Hold on, where's Melody? She moved on me. I can't find her. There she is, way up there. Go ahead, Melody.
I make a motion that we adjourn from our Finance meeting.
Do I have a second? Yes, I see Mr. Stotin giving me the two fingers. Hey, we are... Hey, we are adjourned at 7:18.
Thank you all very much. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at 7:25.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With A Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 18th, 2020 Meeting of Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we are thankful for this day and your blessings, thankful for how you continue to work in our lives once again. We pray you would continue to be with us as we see our state opening back up and things in our county and our city happening. We ask for safety, be with those who will be out and about, continue to be with first responders, be with those on the front lines, and we continue to pray for those who have either experienced the COVID-19 or experienced the effects of it, having had someone ill or having lost their, their job and their income. There are so many things that are happening. We just lift each one up and ask that you would continue to be with us, lead, guide, and direct us and help us tonight in the work that's set before us and we'll give you the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council order. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call the roll. Let me unmute everyone real quick. Okay, go ahead.
What the heck?
Nope, you're good.
No, something's wrong with my computer. Hold on. Okay. All right, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotin?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reports of city officials.
How about reading and disposition of the journal first?
I mean, I suppose we could do that if we wanted to follow the agenda.
Sorry, don't mean to correct you.
Please, that's fine.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated May 4th, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now, reports of city officials.
Email dated May 7th, 2020, regarding the May 4th draft meeting minutes submitted by Mr. Stotin. Email dated May 8th, 2020, regarding public records training certificate submitted by Mr. Matlin. Email dated May 8th, 2020, regarding the temporary resolution 66-20, submitted by Mr. Stephen Wellstead, stormwater engineer. Email dated May 8th, 2020, regarding temporary resolution 6060-20, submitted by Treasurer Bob Wolfinger. Email dated May 8th, 2020, regarding CDVG-FY 2020 scheduling pending, submitted by Linda Burvey, Executive Director of Community Development. Email dated May 11th, 2020, regarding Economic Development Committee meetings submitted by Mr. McDaniel. Email dated May 11th, 2020, regarding Water Water Pollution Control Meeting Agenda submitted by Mr. James. Email dated May 18th, 2020, regarding additional information for temporary resolution 70-20, submitted by City Engineer Mitch Nolan. Email dated May 18th, 2020, regarding temporary resolution 60-20, submitted by Denise Cruz, Stormwater Coordinator.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
Are there any special presentations or awards?
There are none.
Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
We have no voters or taxpayers present with us in this meeting, though again, they do have access via the different mediums to view our proceedings this evening. Are there reports of standing committees?
There is one. Finance Committee meeting minutes for May 4th, 2020, submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the, oh, give me a second here to push the right button. Beginning with the second reading of temporary resolution 66-20.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, OEPA, water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF program, and to execute contracts as required, offered by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
At this point, I would like to, Mr. President, make a motion to replace resolution, temporary resolution numbered 66-20 with temporary resolution number 66-20 star.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to replace temporary resolution 66-20 with temporary resolution 66-20 star. Discussion, Mr. James?
This actually adds some things that, based on our last council meeting, that were not in the original legislation that now help clarify it. Obviously, there's consensus that the work at the Lawrence Street Plant is urgently needed and the impact on rate payers had to be discussed at length and a lot of information was provided to ensure that the funding is there, that the present rate structure has very much supported the preparation for this. And at this point, make sure everybody understands, this will not get a brand-new plant for us. This will render it, which is somewhat overdue as a useful asset for many years to come, but it'll still be the same water treatment or wastewater treatment process that is now in place.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion on the motion to amend? If not, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Sorry, and Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes nine to zero. We now have before us temporary resolution 66-20 star. Mr. James?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution numbered 66-20 star.
Mr. Hall?
I had unmuted. Second, please.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 66-20 star. Discussion, Mr. James?
At this point, any questions? I would like to yield to the people that have done a superb job of putting information together, Mr. Mike Nixon, Denise Cruz, and Engineer Stephen Wellstead.
If then there are no questions on the motion to suspend, we'll go ahead and call the question and then come back on the motion to pass and include those folks at that time. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion at this point in time that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution numbered 66-20 star.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 66-20 star. Discussion, Mr. James?
As I mentioned before, this is something that has been over, somewhat overdue for refurbishment and in some cases, upgrading the present Lawrence Street wastewater pollution facility. And any further information, I'd like to yield to Mr. Nixon, Mr. Denise Cruz, or Stephen Wellstead.
We will indeed yield to the trifecta. Do you have anything to add?
We do not.
Okay, very good. Any questions before we move on to vote on this resolution? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 66-20 star passes nine to zero. We now have temporary resolution 67-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance a manly certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and to increase estimated receipts in the LDOT Fund 208, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 67-20. We now move to the first reading of temporary resolution 68-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a change order for the Union Mulberry Phase III Storm Sewer Project, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Yes, this is actually related to some information that's come about from the Klein Avenue, the Mulberry Street project, that they were not quite certain where the gas lines were going to need to be relocated and there are some additional expenses associated with that. Presently, this motion, or I should say, resolution is, the amount is $120,000, but we've learned that there might be additional funds that's needed for that. So I'm going to yield to Denise Cruz for this.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes, thank you. The gas lines were not initially indicated that they needed lowering. Because we're lowering this, we're actually destroying the street and building a street in the area and lowering it to allow stormwater to flow down the street. The gas lines aren't going to have adequate cover, so we can't wait for the gas department to do this. We've had to authorize the contractor to go ahead and get his subcontractor on to lower it. So the, the cost that I have as of today is $132,000.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Any questions? Mr. James, anything else to add on the, well, we haven't really got a motion on the floor yet, so.
We do not, no.
With the discussion?
Nothing really to add. I think that it's been carefully vetted and negotiated with the contractor. I'm satisfied with it, as well as being told that Denise Cruz is satisfied with it as well. It looks like we need to amend this and turn it into a star. Can we do that at this time?
We do not need to amend this, Mr. James, and the reason why is because the request to change the legislation came in before the meeting. Therefore, the legislation was changed prior to it and it reads correctly now in the record.
Ah, okay.
So a motion to suspend is in order.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of this temporary resolution 68-20.
Second?
A motion is.
Second and third.
Yeah, we, we need you to amend your motion to include the second and third reading.
I apologize, second and third reading, that's correct.
Ms. Teener?
Second?
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 68-20. Any further discussion, Mr. James?
I have none at this time.
Any questions or discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. James?
Mr. President, at this line, time, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record temporary resolution numbered 68-20.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 68-20. Further discussion, Mr. James?
I have nothing to add to it at this point.
Discussion on the motion to pass, Ms. Bobbitt?
Just so happy that we are getting this passed this evening. This is a long time in the making and I sure appreciate Denise's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 68-20 passes nine to zero. We now have before us temporary resolution 69-20.
A resolution to increase receipts and appropriate from the unencumbered balance. A resolution to increase receipts and appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend their certificate with the county auditor, and the general fund one oh one, and in the health insurance management fund seven two two, offered by Mrs. Downhour, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporarily numbered sixty-nine dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-nine dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour.
I'll save it for the motion.
Okay. Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution numbered sixty-nine dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-nine dash twenty. Ms. Downhour.
Yes, this resolution covers the administrative fees that are, that are estimated, because we are actually discontinuing our membership in the health consortium. These are for claims that actually occurred before the end of June, that will probably come in between July and December, and we're looking around eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars for these administrative fees.
Thank you, Ms. Downhour. Is there any other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-nine dash twenty passes nine to zero. We now have before us temporary resolution seventy dash twenty.
A resolution to enter into a LPA agreement with ODOT for an ODOT LET project, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First reading on temporary resolution seventy dash twenty. Are there any other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move on. Yes, I see Mr. Stone's hand waving.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to place temporary resolution seventy twenty on the table, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place temporary resolution seventy dash twenty on the table. This motion does not permit discussion, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy dash twenty has been placed on the table, and I might just suggest that in new business, we can discuss why that was as we move forward. Should there be desire to do so, that is certainly not anything that has to, to be discussed as we go. Other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council? If not, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with first reading of temporary ordinance ten dash twenty.
An ordinance to conform the boundaries of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, and Greenfield Township, Ohio pursuant to the regular annexation of seven six point eight seven seven plus minus acres in Greenfield Township, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Hall, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, Mr. President, this ordinance authorizes Law Director Olm to petition the county commissioners to include the timbertop land, land within the city boundaries. Once that's done, you can move forward with the necessary documentation with Secretary of State, the county auditor, and the county recorder, so that we can move forward with this project. Two readings, please.
So then, first of two readings on temporary ordinance ten dash twenty. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council? If not, we'll move on to tabled legislation. Is there any ac, action on tabled legislation this evening? Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council remove ordinance thirty-two nineteen off the table, please.
Second.
We have a motion, motion in a second to take temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen from the table. This motion cannot be discussed, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen has been taken from the table and is now on the floor before us. Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw ordinance thirty-two nineteen, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to withdraw temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen. Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. President, the income tax levy did not pass, so we do not get an opportunity to levy the tax, so I'm removing the ordinance from consideration.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to withdraw? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen has been withdrawn. Is there any other action on tabled legislation this evening? Is there any unfinished business this evening? Is there any new business this evening?
So, I do have a question.
Becky has a question. Ms. Teener.
Yes, I just have a question. So, when the levy goes on, where does the money come out of to place it on the ballot that we have to, of course, pay the Board of Elections? Where does that money come from? I can't, is that out of the general fund?
Ms. Nettles, I see, yes, Ms. Nettles is shaking her head up and down, yes, to place the levy on the ballot, we are required to pay out of the general fund for that money, Ms. Nettles.
Yeah, when we get our real estate settlements.
Yeah.
From the county, so what we had for the, no, November, and probably what we had just for this one, it'll be automatically deducted from our settlement when we get our second half, that they'll just keep the money up there to reimburse Board of Elections, and then I'll have to post it through the city's general fund as an expense, so, so, yeah, they take it directly from our cash settlements.
Okay, so what was the, how much was the one to put the one on? Well, see, we put on what?
I don't, I won't know until the end of August.
About even the two that were done last year?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Teener. You have other questions, or is that kind of do it for you? Okay, thank you. Any other new business this evening? Mr. Hall.
Yeah, I just, sort of back to the, the tax issue, for those of you who might not have looked at the election returns, we made pretty significant progress in, in terms of getting additional support for that initiative, and I just think that's worth noting, for the record, an additional two hundred and ninety votes or so would have turned that no vote into a, a positive outcome for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further new business this evening? Okay. If there's no other new business tonight, we'll ask the clerk, read our announcement of scheduled meetings.
Our next meeting of council will be actually in person on June eighth at six thirty PM. That meeting will be placed at Olive Dale. At that meeting, we will have three public hearings on temporary ordinance four dash twenty, five dash twenty, and six dash twenty. The meeting coming after would be June twenty-second at six thirty PM. Upcoming committee meetings for the next thirty days. Economic Development, May twenty-first at seven thirty AM in the City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Safety Committee meeting, May twenty-second at seven thirty AM, City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room, and it may be canceled, but as of right now, it is scheduled. Code Enforcement and Zoning, June first at eight AM, City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Service, June fifth at seven thirty AM, City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Finance, June eighth at six PM at Olive Dale. Water Water Pollution, June tenth at eight AM at the Water Pollution Control Room. Law Committee, June tenth at nine thirty AM at the Fairfield County Unit of Support Community Room. Public Works, June twelfth at seven thirty AM at Transit Conference Room. And finally, the Economic Development, June eighteenth at seven thirty AM at the City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
There is one. PNC for payment to P, MNCO, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents for publication of the public hearings that I mentioned earlier.